I know Council McGee will be trying to log into the Internet, so when she comes in, you can acknowledge her. Business from the public is next up on the agenda. Did anyone sign up to speak? No, nobody? Excellent, thank you. We did receive some written materials, and I hope you read that before the meeting. And then, anybody in the chambers like to speak to the council? Thank you. Next up on the agenda is emergency management, council roles and responsibilities. Chuck Perino has a verbal presentation. Chuck, the floor is yours.
I got an apology. I got a PowerPoint that was supposed to happen, but I brought the wrong thing down to make sure that happens. But I could walk through it just verbally, I suppose. I can make sure you all get the PowerPoint afterwards.
Okay.
Apologize for that.
Have a seat, please, and use the microphone. Thank you.
So, late last year, I brought before you all the natural hazard mitigation plan to look at, and Council Novak asked, she found it would be beneficial perhaps to have a little discussion about how the city responds to disasters, what council's role would be in disasters, what elected officials need to do in disasters. So essentially, that's kind of what I'm here to talk a little bit about today. Since I've been an emergency manager here, it's not quite six years yet, but we have dealt with a water crisis in Salem that we sent water trailers to, we've dealt with the eclipse, which we did a lot of planning and so forth for, we've had two FEMA-declared flooding disasters, we've had two FEMA-declared wind disasters, we've had the pandemic, of course, the near dear to my heart, the wildfires, we've had the pandemic. I'm starting to think I'm bad luck for the city. So, you know, we've dealt with all this for the last almost six years now, and, you know, that's kind of what we do. In addition to that, we also deal with all the events that happened in the city. We work closely with all the departments that are involved. We help coordinate the response to those. We look at, you know, who's doing what, we work with the organizers to make sure that we're meeting their goals as well, and we develop, as a result of these, communication plans, medical response plans. We, with Police Department, Fire Department, they decide what streets are going to be shut down, things like that. Everybody's on the same page, and things hopefully go well. And if they don't go well, we've got the plans to step up and deal with that if need be. So that's kind of what we do in the city with emergency response, with emergency management, and how we do it. You know, I'm sure you all have watched the news in the summertime, and you hear Alabama's declaring a state disaster, or, you know, the president has declared a federal disaster in Florida, or something like that. Just to kind of walk through the steps of how it becomes an Albany problem to something that's on CNN. It starts off, all city departments are going to be responding to it, whether it's a catastrophic issue, or if it's a small flooding event, or something like that. At that point, if it is large enough, the Emergency Operations Center will open up. And I'll talk a little bit about that here soon, but, you know, once the Emergency Operations Center is open, and if we are experiencing the damages, and if we are maybe having some resource shortages or personnel shortages that can't be filled through mutual aid, we're going to be calling upon the county. We're going to issue a disaster declaration, and that comes through the mayor and the city manager, and it needs to be ratified by the city council. City council meetings don't always coincide with disasters, unfortunately, so that can happen retroactively. We would have a council meeting as soon as possible afterwards to make sure that, you know, you all agree with that disaster declaration. And it's not something that's going to be done lightly, we're not going to do that if there's a chance of flurries tomorrow. This is something that requires immediate needs, you know, to protect life, protect property, that kind of thing. So, so that's kind of the flow of that. Once it reaches the state office, Lynn County is going to send it to the governor. At the same time period, we're sending damage declaration stuff up to the state. FEMA has different categories financially. If we meet a certain category, and this is statewide, it's not just the City of Albany, but once that disaster threshold is met, that's when they submit it to the president for a federal disaster declaration. So at this point, we're receiving state aid, the federal government has stepped in to provide some assistance too, whether it's boots on the ground, or whether it's, you know, other resources to help us out. So, and this is where we start to receive the FEMA funding that comes in to help with reconstruction and rebuilding, Small Business Administration loans to help out businesses that have been impacted by the disaster and things like that. So all that comes with the federal aid, and all comes with the federal declaration as well. So I talked a little bit about the, and this is such a great PowerPoint, I'm really upset that you all can't experience it. Anyway, the, once the Emergency Operations Center is open, and we have two of them, one of them is this room in that closet there, we have tubs full of FEMA paperwork, and phones, and radios, and tables. We would scurry and get the room set up with the tables, and we should, we could be operational pretty quickly here in this office. If the, if this area or building was unusable for flooding, or some other damages that have occurred, we have a secondary Emergency Operations Center at the, at the main library. So with that, the Emergency Operations Center really just handles the coordination of the disaster. We take the, take the load off of the responders in the field, and the Emergency Operations Center has a set group of work areas. We have a command unit, we have operations, and finance, logistics, planning, and they each have a separate role. We have staff throughout the city that are trained in this, it's FEMA training that they take as often as they can, not as often as I'd like, but as often as they can. And, you know, with that, we put folks into where they need to go, not necessarily by their seniority, we put them in based on their abilities. So, you know, we might have Peter, for instance, would actually serve underneath of the incident commander as our liaison officer. How the council roles fit into that, during disaster, I mean, your main roles are going to be dealing with, with policy, budget, and political direction for the city, just like you do on a sunny day, right? But you're also doing that during disaster as well. So, once disaster does occur, you're going to be dealing with things like the ratification of the disaster declaration, that's going to be a major responsibility. But the primary and most important responsibility of political leadership is serving as our conduit of information to the citizens. They elected you, they trust you, they're the ones that are going to be talking to you all. You may have connections with the private sector as well, and that's all important stuff that we need to know here, so we can set priorities, and we can, we can move from there. Your conduit to the Emergency Operations Center would be through Peter. He's also working with the schools, and with all of our other partners as well, he's a busy guy during an activation as well. So, that's pretty much the main role, and you've got other roles, of course, you know, setting priorities prior to disaster and things like that. After disaster, you're looking at things like making sure that the federal aid, the state aid that we're receiving is equitable, it's going to the city as a whole, not just certain components of the city. We want to make sure that, that any sort of rebuilding, things like that, is all handled through city code, and that's all, everything that, you know, the city council is going to need to be, have a, have an eye into that sort of information there. So, you know, we respond here at the Emergency Operations Center with, it's a system called NIMS, the National Incident Management System. And again, it calls out the different components, command, and finance, and everything else. Everybody has a job, everybody has something to do. It's a well-tested system. After the attacks in 9/11, NIM system wasn't in use at that time. New York was dealing with a lot of problems, so they called in a U.S. Forest Service team, not due to their terrorism experience, clearly, but they were there to, because they were used to using this system during wildfires and other big operations. And they were able to kind of get things under control as much as physically possible in that situation, so. So that's pretty much what I have. The city code, I could, like I said, all this stuff was in my, my beautiful PowerPoint that is in my pocket. You know, that's kind of what I have, I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm sure I skipped over a good bit.
Yes, Council Novak.
Oops, there we go. Yeah, thank you, Director Perino. One of the reasons that I wanted you to come and do this, and I very much appreciate, and I will actually watch that PowerPoint once we get it, is you had said that as counselors, we're all going, we have responsibilities for our ward. Would you please address those? I would like to know this kind of stuff before the stuff hits the fan and we're all freaked out. I want to know, what responsibilities do I have to ward one and to the city as a whole? What happens, you know, we all get called down here, if you could just kind of lay that out a little bit, that would be super helpful.
Yeah, as I said, part of that, I mean, we need to find out what's going on out there, what sort of damages are happening, what their, what people's needs are. So we want to have all that information gathered. You know, we're expecting these people to be talking to you out there, and if they're not, we, I don't want to say I expect you to, but I think it's proper to be out there and asking folks what, what needs to happen. Ultimately, we serve the citizens, and we need to find out what's going on. If I find out from your ward that perhaps something's needed for sheltering, or something like that, you know, that's important information that we would need plugged into our response, so.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure, absolutely.
Suppose it's like there's a terrible storm, and we don't have Internet or power, how do you communicate with us? How do we communicate with you? Are we just all on our own?
Well, I think for the Emergency Operations Center aspect of things, we have redundancies in communication that we can, we can talk to each other. If it's bad enough, we have ham radio here at the Emergency Operations Center that we can communicate with the county, with the state, with whoever is able to, we're working with at that point. As far as reaching out to you specifically, I mean, that's going to be something that, if it's, if it's determined necessary at the point to get that information from you, or to get some help from you, we would probably do it the old-fashioned way and send out a squad car or something like that. So, you know, we can, we'll eventually be bringing in things like cellular on wheels and stuff like that to kind of restore communications, networks, but it does take time.
And that holds true also if there's an EMF attack?
An electromagnetic pulse?
Yes.
I am not qualified to talk about nuclear attacks, but, you know, if we did lose communications and things like that, I do know that that would be a very big federal response at that point, and we would have federal resources being tasked to be providing communications, providing that kind of stuff. That's a little bit more than we're able to handle here.
Even just the grid going down, you know, whether it was in nuclear...
Exactly, and that's where we rely on ham radio and things like that, because ham radio is fantastic, it was developed...
Yeah, for that, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may just supplement what Chuck was saying, is that he talked about NIMS, or the National Incident Management System, and NIMS uses a system called ICS, or Incident Command System. And in the ICS, people are trained to take the positions that Chuck briefly spoke about. ICS is meant to be used when lines of authority and lines of funding aren't clear, or they come together from many different organizations. One of the tough things, though, we try to keep the EOC as clean as we can without, with as little interference from outside as possible, and oftentimes we'll have separate press briefings, so we can brief the media in an area outside of the EOC. So one of the toughest things to do is to keep, keep people, you know, people always want to come and look at an accident, but keep, keep the EOC operating efficiently, as efficiently as possible.
Would you be so kind and define that term? I know a lot of acronyms, but that one...
Sure, it's the Emergency Operations Center.
Thank you.
That'd be this room, it would be the key of coordination for the city at that point.
I'm sorry?
That would be this room and the key of coordination, I guess, at that point.
So I think what Chuck is trying to say, and he'll correct me if I'm wrong, is that the biggest and best role that the mayor and counselors can play is in messaging to the public. So if it's a flood, for instance, I think you're all aware of messages not to venture into areas where your car might become flooded itself. If there are downed power lines, you are all aware of messaging that has to do with staying away from downed power lines. And these are the kinds of things, when he mentioned that the public knows you, trusts you, turns to you, those are the things that we would need the most help in. The actual operational command of operational units, that's all being done, and it needs, it needs to happen as efficiently and safely as possible.
Thank you.
Any other councillor? Thank you, councillor. Councillor McGee? Excuse me, I'm McGee.
The other M. So let me, I just want to make sure I heard correctly. So at first, you've got the staff responding to the emergency, and then you open the EOC, and then, at that point, you may request the city council to declare an emergency, but what I heard you say was, that could happen retroactively? Does that open up monies from the state if there was an emergency, like us declaring that emergency? What does that give us?
Yeah, actually, the benefits, and that's one of my slides that I did kind of skip over in my forgetfulness here, but the benefits of declaring an emergency is it provides us with the legal framework to proceed, it provides, it opens up those avenues of support from, from the county at first.
Okay.
Most of those are under mutual aid, but, but we also get state support at that point, and it also opens up the avenue for federal support coming in as well.
And then if it becomes a larger emergency, then state and federal might declare their own emergencies, but...
Exactly, I mean, it all comes down to what the City of Albany has left to deal with the emergency, and if we are tapped out, we get help from our friends.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that that, that declaration, that's part of our role, is to help make sure that we have the resources we need to respond to an emergency in a fast way.
Thank you. Councillor Newton, I'll get you next.
So, just to make sure I'm understanding what our goal is, I want, so you were mentioning that, hey, we would reach out to folks, or know how to communicate, I'm wondering, like, are we talking like email, phone, are we talking about different platforms, like Nextdoor, or Facebook, or Instagram, or, I'm sure, you know, I know we have official, you know, Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter for the city, but, and I do know that we have the Neighborhood Watch Program in place as well with Albany Police. So I'm trying to understand the formation, like how to titrate information and roles.
Okay.
I think it's great, we obviously would love to help and already communicate with constituents on various social platforms, but I just think it would be great to have a more clear plan in place, or understand parameters.
A lot of that falls under the Public Information Section of the Emergency Operations Center in that, and it may not be in the same building as this, as Peter mentioned. A lot of times we keep them separately, they do their work, they're the folks who are monitoring social media, they're squashing rumors that may pop up. I was evacuated during the fires in 2020, and there was so many rumors that popped up there, and most of it was just scaremongering, that, you know, that I believe the county did a better job at that. That's one of the roles that we do here, the Public Information Officers will take on. I could see the counselors supporting the Public Information Officers, you know, by being the face of the city in that case, you know, maybe working with the, with media and stuff, and getting that information out. How the, how they would communicate with you, I guess would really depend on the situation. If it's a flooding or something like that, I'm sure you communicate with your, your folks as you do, but, you know, that's kind of how it would work. I hope I understood your question correctly.
Yeah, I just think we need to flesh out things a little further with the, with the emergency communications person, which I'm going to make the assumption, possibly Matt Harrington?
Yeah, and actually, we do have an official emergency communication system, it's statewide now as a result of the fires that happened, but it is based off the old emergency alert system, but it's tied to cell phones now, but it still can go through TV and radio and everything else. So official, important messages, lifesaving information, information is going to go out via that. So, I mean, we're going to have one voice getting that information out. The Public Information Officer, they do keep track of the official City of Albany site, it's going to be coordinated with other sites, so the Public Information Officers all work in concert together, giving out one voice, one message, getting that out, rather than having us stating one fact, and then the county stating another fact that may or may not guide.
Okay, Chuck, just to pyramid on what you're saying, I think one of the absolute worst things we as council could do would be, you know, going out into our individual area and saying, "The sky is falling, the sky is falling." We don't have the expertise, none whatsoever. We have to rely on what's been coming down, and what's the format that's been set up, and how it's set up to work. We have to let that happen, we can't jump in and just start creating more havoc than, because we don't have the expertise.
Correct, and that's where this conduit, I mean, it's more than just one way. So, you know, we're feeding information to you all about what's going on, and what our priorities are, and things like that. That's the kind of information that's going out through the Public Information Officers as well.
Councillor Kupczynski, I appreciate that comment, and I would just point out that sometimes the hardest thing to do is to, to not do anything. There's no role at that point, really, for counselors. And you can say that about a lot of the employees in the city, too. The worst thing that somebody maybe in one of our other departments could do is get in trouble themselves, and then be somebody that needs help. So there are defined roles for emergency services, personnel for responders, and for public works folks, depending on what the hazard or the emergency is, but for everybody else, the most important responsibility is to take care of yourself and your family, and make sure that you don't become part of the problem. The council's biggest contribution will come later, when it comes to perhaps appropriating money to deal with certain problems, or, as Chuck said, in ratifying a emergency declaration that perhaps the mayor, or even the city manager, if we can't get a hold of the mayor, will do. So again, sometimes the toughest thing is to, is to recognize, understand that there, you don't have a job description for an emergency.
So, Councillor Smith?
This brings back all kinds of memories.
Good ones.
Of standing up the EOC for various incidents that you've mentioned, the eclipse was one, the start of the pandemic, we had the EOC operating for several weeks, if not a couple of months. Not much going on, but the, the key component in both of those incidents was public information. That was jumping on rumors, telling people what was happening and what wasn't happening, and making those messages consistent. It was, it was very helpful to the public to have the same information from one source, and to have one in, one message from one source, and to address the issues of the day as, as time went on, as the, as the restrictions were put in place for the pandemic, we were able to talk about what was happening in Albany, and what wasn't happening in Albany. And it, the, well, what I'm trying to say is that the public information function is extremely important, regardless of what the emergency is, because people thrive on information, they need it to make their own decisions. And it's also important, the training that Chuck mentioned, that's done through FEMA, it's tedious, it's repetitive, it's really important, and it's really necessary. The more our staff takes those trainings, and learns the lingo, and learns the, what A, B, C, D of, of how to respond to an incident, regardless of the assignment that you have, the duties that you're charged with, it becomes second nature. People will make fun of doing a drill, for example, "We're going to do an emergency drill." Well, why, that just takes time away from your workday. No, that is your work. You need to be ready when something happens, and the more you practice, the easier it happens when it's sitting right in your lap. So I, I'm proud to be part of this organization, which is very well-trained, and makes a point of nagging people into keeping current with the training that's available. It's really important. It's also, I'm repeating myself here, but repeating is important in that we need to be repeating the same factual information to people, to reassure them that we're on it, and that we care, and that we'll take care of them the best we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, I just had a couple of things. Perfect practice makes perfect performance, right? You've got to keep practicing, repeat it. I do have a question, because we are two counties, so a bridge goes down, are we coordinating with Benton County, Millersburg, our partner, neighboring cities, how's that going to work for us?
We will, and unfortunately, in state statute, it's written that we would need to work through Lynn County. In this situation where, you know, we're, a large portion of our population is cut off from us, that's where just building partnerships with Benton County is kind of ideal. You know, we, technically, I'm supposed to be working with Lynn County for a resource request, who will then send up the state, who will then ask Benton County, who will then speak back to the state, who will then ask Lynn County, and then back to us. But picking up the phone and being able to talk to the emergency manager in Benton County, you know, is immensely important. So, you know, that's the kind of relationships that we build on a day-to-day basis, and I think that that's, that'll serve us well, you know, if, God forbid, something like that does happen.
Okay, thank you. Councillor, have anything else for Chuck?
One last thing. So, it's kind of like contrary to what I thought when you were sitting before us a few months ago. If I'm understanding clearly now...
Okay.
It's, it's not that council will have specific responsibilities, it's that we have no, we have no work to do unless directed by someone in the emergency setup to do something, right? We're just supposed to watch out for our own selves, then, unless directed to do something by you all? Or unless you send a squad car that says, you know, "Come, come with us, you're meeting here," or something?
Right, and I mean, I think when you look at it, you know, it's a, it's a long process. A disaster, you know, they're still dealing with the effects of Katrina in New Orleans. Their city councils doing city council things, they're not working on emergency management things anymore. In the immediate aftermath of a disaster, I don't have a role in that. That's cops, and firefighters, and public works that are out there doing it until I am told to, Chuck, it's your turn to get to work. It's not that you don't have anything to do, you still have all the things that you do now.
But nothing special, nothing germane to the fact that we're in the midst of an emergency, unless directed, that we don't have responsibilities to that unless we're told...
No. And again, as Peter mentioned...
We need money, come ratify this.
Right, well, yeah, so, but that's, that's nothing out of the ordinary, that's regular council business.
Councillor Novak, if I could, you're on the right track. They're, they're really, well, first of all, nobody in the EOC would direct you to do, and we would ask you for help with communications probably, but if you think about what the council's role is all the time, is to look to the future, and to make policy, and to appropriate money. So the work that you are doing now lays the groundwork for what happens in an emergency. So Councillor Smith talked about the training of staff, so supporting the training of staff in the Incident Command System, looking to the future and making sure that emergency preparedness is, is a priority for us as we go about our daily business when there is no emergency. All those things are what, in the end, contribute during the emergency. When, when the stuff hits the fan, that's the time to set aside and let the people who are trained to do what they do, do what they do.
Thank you, that's, that's what I'm hearing today, whereas before, I thought we would have, I thought there was something that we specifically would need to do in the event of emergency, but that's not the case. The people who are trained will do what they do, and, and we just stay out of the way.
And that is, or, it may be beneficial to think of council's role as more of a recovery function, as opposed to response function.
That's like that.
Yeah.
Excellent. Anything else, council? Thank you for your presentation, we'd look forward to seeing the PowerPoint.
All right, thank you.
You'd probably get questions from that, too. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is the August, oh, excuse me, Certification of Tax-Exempt Properties, Director Jaeger will be speaking to us, is on page 2 through 8 in your packet.
Good evening. Every year, we bring forward these properties to get certified as tax-exempt with the county. These are really important in helping providing some affordable housing here in Albany. Currently, the Albany Partnership for Housing and Community Development have several properties, they have 136 units of those, 96 of those are tax-exempt. What's really good about this is they provide affordable housing to residents who earn less than 60% of the area median income. The rents are generally... The rents are generally less than half a market rate, and there are several, with most tenants paying about 30%. Rents include water, sewer, city services fee, garbage. For example, at Periwinkle Place, rents are about $525 for a two-bedroom unit, and those include carport and garden space. The costs that are associated with these are a little bit higher than for-profit apartment complexes and housing. So, you know, this just certifying these as tax-exempt really does help keep these costs low. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Otherwise, we'll be bringing this back on Wednesday.
Are 100% of units for low-income or voucher housing?
I'm not sure about that one. I believe so.
Oh, okay, excellent. Sorry, I hope you heard me. Alex mentioned I should speak up. You believe so that all 100% are like voucher, low-income housing?
I'm not sure. Anne?
I think we said 96 were...
96 out of 130-some, I think you said.
Yes.
Okay.
So, thank you. Anne Catlin, Community Development Department. So vouchers are distributed by Lynn Benton Housing Authority, and those can go anywhere in the community. Albany Partnership for Housing provides low-rent housing without needing to have a voucher. Now, some residents do have a voucher, but they don't need to have a voucher to live in this housing.
Thanks.
Thank you. I think everybody has their questions answered. Thank you very much. So we'll see this Wednesday evening?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next one is my favorite, August through September 2023 city council meeting dates. Mary Dibble's going to speak with us today.
Actually, I'll save Mary the walk up to the podium there, Mayor. And this is really pretty simple. The mayor's asked us to look into a way by which the council could have a month off, I shouldn't say a month off, but a month away from their responsibilities to the council. So we did look at that, and there is, of course, precedent. Many cities, including the city that I came from, had the whole month of August off in the summertime. It provides you a chance to schedule some family vacation time, and by the way, it also provides staff the ability to do that. But the complicating factor for us is that our charter requires that the council meet twice a month. So we had to work around that, and what you see on your staff memo there reflects Mary's creativity in giving you basically six, it looks like six weeks there. And I should, again, not say off because there is a little caveat here that if, you know, if there was an emergency like Chuck just talked about, it could be that the council is called back into session to address some emergent need. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a natural disaster, it could be a funding opportunity that might pass us if we don't act. So what you see in the staff memo is the proposed council meeting schedule for August and September, which would give you, again, as you see, that amount of time away from your council responsibilities. And both Mary and I are available for any questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions for Peter?
I just want to say thank you to Mary for coming up with those dates. I'm super excited, too. Mr. Mary, you're not alone in that.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm sure Dr. McGee's okay with it. All right, thank you. You have something, please, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I always look at the dark side. I don't always, but here we are. This would not absolve us from our other obligations to other agencies that where we represent the council.
Correct.
Unless they take the month off as well.
I hope they follow our lead.
Some of them take July, I can tell you that.
Well, thank you. Next on the agenda is recess to executive session to discuss litigation or litigation likely to be filed in accordance with ORS 192.660, parent 2 and H, and a real property transaction on ORS 192.660, subsection 2, subsection E. Seth, excuse me, Sean Kidd, City Attorney, and Seth Sherry, Economic Development Manager, will be speaking to that. So once everybody clears out.
Mayor?
Yes.
And when we go, and we only have, I know we have veteran reporters here tonight, just to make the disclosure about not reporting on this.
Oh, yes. I mean, reporters are required not to disclose but the general nature of the topics.
Yeah, no, the details.
None of the details. Does everybody staying here? I declare executive session starting at 4:35 PM. 4:36, yeah, we stay here.
Did you want to continue discussion about lawsuits or do you want to wait till other councilors get back?
I just thought, I mean, just wait for them.
I know, I'll just wait for them. So you just still want to continue the general discussion about litigation?
I have another question.
May I make one point?
Yes.
So Councilor Novak had talked about incentives early on in the discussion to file against the city for recovering money. And I, you know, I've had conversations with the mayor and I will tell you that there is an incentive to people. What Sean was talking about is the practice of considering this through a business case lens. That it costs less to actually settle the case. The example he used was $7,500 settlement versus a $33,000 or $50,000 that it will take to take it through a trial. So there is setup right there. There's an incentive to settle regardless of the merits of the case. My two favorite words in the English language are tort reform. And in my humble opinion, it has to happen. But as long as it doesn't, we will continue to get aberrations like this that set up these kinds of incentives. And Sean joked that he has to bring tranquilizers for me. I assure you, I don't have to have them, but it does make one hot under the collar to see that regardless of the fact that there's no culpability, you can actually settle and get money for. To me, it just encourages bad behavior.
Yeah, I agree.
And then one thing I just wanted to bring up is that two weeks ago or a week before last, I wasn't here. I was out of state and I know that Judge Reed came in and gave a State of the Court address of municipal court. And I wasn't here to hear that, but if there was any questions about municipal court, I'm happy. But if there was any questions about municipal court, I'm happy to answer those as well.
I actually did have some questions. The he said, like Oregon or we're like number one in several statistics. I couldn't find that anywhere. I wanted to know where he was sourcing his information from.
Well, they say we were number one in.
Multiple things.
We'll have to ask him where.
The recording's not great.
Okay.
But it was like number one, like methamphetamine, number one. And I was just like, I couldn't find the sourcing.
So I would ask either him or September, she would know.
Yeah, well, I could house. No, we don't have court tomorrow. I'll say that's even tomorrow. But.
I was gonna email myself. But if you if you'd be able to find out, I'd love to.
Yeah, so we're number one.
Love a copy of his of his report because I was like, wait, what? And I couldn't I couldn't replicate it in my search.
Okay.
And he did have a PowerPoint, didn't he?
Yes.
You can have him send a PowerPoint.
Okay.
I don't recall the sources being on there. And when he went through it, I actually don't believe he had a PowerPoint. He was just walking through things. And when he would he would say, oh, it's number one, or and he didn't say according to blah, 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 we're number one in this. I think it's important to cite that.
Thank you.
Anything else for the city attorney, city manager? We're going to go into business from the council. I'm going to start on this side and walk this direction. Councilor Novak?
I have a couple of items, but I want to save them for Wednesday. So nothing this evening.
Thank you. Councilor Montague?
I do not have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Smith?
Nothing this evening.
Councilor Newton?
Are we on air?
Are we on air?
Are we being recorded?
I my only question was actually the one I addressed to our city attorney.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Kaptinski?
Nothing this evening.
Councilor McGee?
Nope.
Perfect. And my car is my daughter's car works. That's all I had tonight. I was a happy man this weekend. But I'll thank you all for being here tonight. I'm gonna turn it over now to the city manager for his report.
And I won't keep you long, but just really for the benefit of everybody. I executive sessions came up as a big topic late last year. And I wrote a little piece that the Democrat Herald published. Just a caution that, you know, we a reminder that we enter executive session very advisedly and very conservatively. Try to do that as seldom as possible. But the stuff that's discussed in executive session, for those reasons that we're allowed to do it needs to stay stay confidential. So just a reminder, especially for for new councilors, that the stuff about the litigation stuff we talked about and the real real property issues that we talked about need to stay confidential. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilor Newton will not be here on Wednesday.
I'm taking the kids to Disneyland. Continue. Well, right. It's a small world several times for all of you.
And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. I will see you all Wednesday night at 6:00 PM.
Minus councillor.